This conference will now be recorded.
2022 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioner meeting. I would ask you all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to note for the record that all commissioners are present for our meeting tonight. All public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meetings are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to our website for public access. Moving on to the agenda, Randy, if you would please read for us the public and virtual meeting rules.
Sure. We do have a slight shift in the agenda. We have moved courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items to the front of this agenda. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on a specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name, address, for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually on the GoToMeeting platform, please keep your microphones on mute to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute your microphones of remote attendees if needed. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name, address, and question into the chat box, which is located as a balloon icon in the upper right of your screen. The staff member monitoring the GoToMeeting platform will read your question aloud for the board to hear. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I'd also like to announce for the record that the Board of Commissioners met in executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters on January 4th, January 14th, January 18th, and also this evening before our meeting. Moving on to item number four on our agenda, as Randy informed us, is courtesy of the floor. It is the opportunity for any members of the public to speak to the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Sir, please come forward.
Brian, hi, 1273 Eck Road. I'm here to thank the South Whitehall Township Police Department, specifically Lieutenant Klein Top. I talked to him last week about speeding issues. We were having with the new warehouses on Eck Road. That evening, there was an officer there. The very next day, there was a speed board there. And that's money well spent. The speeds drastically dropped. It's, you know, I know an officer can't be there. Those speed boards can be there a week or two. And it really reinforces what the speed limit is. It's, I can't thank you guys enough. My neighbors, thank you. It was getting a little out of control. So it's just an awareness tool. And in the future, when that kind of technology comes across your budget, remember, it's money well spent. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your feedback. It's important for the board to understand the community concerns that you have and that the police were able to address that. Thank you for sharing that with us. Is there anyone else? Sir, come on forward.
Dave Torrey, 1351 Deerfield Drive. I just want to thank the board for accepting the farmland on Spring House. I mean, it's nice to see that preserved as it is. And after all, we have to keep Dennis Guth, who works for New Heart Farms, active in his retirement. He runs the tractors over there.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're very appreciative for the donation of that land for the township and we look forward to the beautiful farmland preservation there. So thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for courtesy of the floor this evening? Is there anyone in the chat with any comments? None? Okay. Very good. We will move on then to our next order of business, which is the approval of our meeting minutes. And the next item would be the meeting minutes from the December 15th, 2021 meeting. I do want to note for that particular meeting, only Commissioner Wolk and I will be voting on these minutes as we are the only two commissioners who were seated at the dais that night. So I will open up the floor if Commissioner Wolk has any comments on the meeting minutes from December 15th. Nothing? Okay. Was there any comment from the public? Anything in the chat? No? Okay, so seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 15th.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Wolk, second from Commissioner Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And moving on to our January 4th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting minutes. That was our reorganization meeting with the full board present. Are there any comments from any of the commissioners on our meeting minutes? Anything from the public? In the chat? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the January 4th meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Very good. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item six, ordinances. We don't have any on our agenda this evening. But I'll move on to agenda item number seven, which is a resolution appointing the township auditor for the audit year of 2021. And I would ask Scott Barrett, our Director of Finance, to please come and present for us this evening.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a very routine yearly resolution that occurs to appoint the auditor for the township. This audit will encompass the audit year 2021. And we're just asking that we appoint Herbine and Company as our auditor for the 2021 year.
Thank you. Is there any comment from any of the commissioners on this agenda item?
I have a comment. I'd like to thank Scott for getting that done on a timely basis for a change. South Whitehall Township. Thank you.
We are very excited.
Yes, we are. Any other comments?
My comment is Herbine did an excellent job all around, getting caught up on all of the audits, including their communication of the outcome.
Thank you. I would agree as well. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Anything in the chat? Okay. So I will ask if there's a motion to approve the resolution appointing the township auditor for the audit year 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
But if you please stay, Scott, I do have the next resolution for you. It's a resolution of the Governing Board of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing, empowering, and directing the proper officers of the governing board to appoint a liaison between it and Burckheimer, the duly-appointed collector of local taxes for the district for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes. Scott, if you would please present for us?
Yes. This is another formality. This resolution allows a member of the township to communicate with Burckheimer. In the past, it had been prior directors of finance, and we had just not updated it. So Tricia has a few more words on this one, and I'll let her speak at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. So like Scott had mentioned, this really is just a formality. This allows the township representative, which would be me, to receive and request otherwise confidential information from Burckheimer for, again, for our official purpose. So that is really all I have unless you folks have any comments. Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Nothing? Any from the public? Anyone in the chat? Okay, then I need a motion to approve said resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Your second? Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Onto item C, resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Kratzer Elementary School. It will be presented with Dave Manhart. Thank you.
So I'll just give an introduction. There's a few new board members here. So I typically give the introduction for these land development projects, give a little bit of background, and then hand it over to the applicant to answer questions. One comment I want to make, kind of related to these, is with the conditions of the resolution, those are in place and must be addressed prior to recording. So the approval isn't, all the conditions will be met prior to recording of the plan. And that's the final thing to move it forward. So I just wanted to put that out there as a point of clarification. So this is a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a plan entitled Kratzer Elementary. It's an application to further develop the property located at 2200 Huckleberry Road. The plan proposes 18,000 square foot building addition on the north side of the existing elementary school, associated stormwater management on the 11-acre property. Property is owned R4 medium-density residential. Parkland School District is the owner and applicant. This plan was reviewed at the November 18th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, and it was recommended for approval at that meeting. There were a number of conditions on the resolution that will be addressed again prior to the plan record. So with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Good evening. Scott McMacdon with Cowan Associates, engineer for the project. As was mentioned, this is a building addition on the existing Kratzer Elementary School building. The school district is nearing capacity for the building and about an 18,000 square foot addition to add some additional capacity in the building and also additional learning spaces and programming needs for the school district. So we've been submitted back in the summer. Went to the Planning Commission back in November, and they recommended a preliminary final approval from the commissioners this evening. We have no issues with any of the conditions. I believe we've executed the resolution and provided that to the township. And we are looking forward to moving forward the project. Currently out for bid, and we're hoping to get into construction in April. And it's going to be about a 15-month construction period. So there really is no, I think the review letters from your township engineer and other staff and consultants at this point are fairly minor in nature, and we have no issues meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this topic?
Actually, I have a quick question. I was just wondering if on the picture, you could show us the flow of traffic with the pickup? Are you able to do that, just so I'm familiar with it?
Yeah. So really, the existing flow of traffic and a lot of the function of the site really will not change. So currently, the parking lot on the left there, that's the parent pickup and drop-off. So they come in basically in a clockwise direction and drop off on, basically, the left side of the, or the west side of the building, and then come out at that same exit point. The front lot, they have it, you know, the passenger, the parent drop-off and the bus drop-off are separated. So in the front, yeah, it's a one-way in. The buses pull in, drop off the children, and then come out the one-way out. And then, you know, disperse on, out from there. So that all exists currently and really is not proposing to change at all. Really, the development of the property is, you know, from the north end of the building back. So it's the back portion of the site. You know, that whole area is going to be fenced off, and there really will not be any impact to the front portion of the site. There are some interior renovations that are happening in the existing school building. That's going to be happening during the summer months. So it's really going to be, it's a pretty nice separation. There's really not going to be a lot of interaction between, you know, the construction that's going on and the kids, which isn't always the case with some of these school renovations. This one is pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Anything in the chat? Okay, moving forward then. Do I hear a motion to grant preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Kratzer Elementary School?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Item D on our agenda this evening is a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Long's Water Technology. Dave, if you'd present again for us? Thank you.
Again, this is for Long's Water Technology. This is a project located at 1567 Housman Road. The plan proposes razing all existing structures and the construction of a 5,600-square-foot commercial building, parking lot, associated stormwater facilities on the roughly 1.3-acre lot. The property is served by public water and sewer and is owned highway commercial. The plan was heard at the December 16th Planning Commission meeting and recommended for approval. That I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Smith from Barry Eyes and Associates. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I'm here with Jim Carroll, who is the owner of Long's Water Technology. The project is a relatively small project for a small business in the township on a property that's a little over an acre. The proposed building is 5,600 square feet, 14 outdoor parking spaces, and an additional five spaces in the garage. This project was actually approved back in 2008, and it was not built at the time. That approval has expired, so we're going back through the process now. The plan you see in front of you is relatively unchanged from the one that was approved back in 2008. We did receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission. We've read through the conditions and are happy to comply with all of those. I also have, since Jim's with me, it's okay with the commissioners. I'll have him give just a little intro about what Long's Water Technology is all about.
Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Warwick and myself, Jim Carroll, were the owners of Long Seeka Water. We've been operating in the township on 309 since 1998. We found out late last spring that we were, that our lease would not be renewed. So that's why we went back and looked at this property that we had before. So we really feel we have a perfect fit for this street. We know a lot of the people down there on that street. A lot of them are already customers. I really do believe it's a perfect fit for us. We want to stay in the township. We don't want to go anywhere else. So we would like to be able to build down there. We've worked, thanks to Greg and all the Planning Commission people that have helped us get to this point. We need to be out by this fall and down here, so we've a lot to do. So this is important for us to be able to get this. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this topic?
Okay, thank you for staying in the township. We appreciate it.
Hope to, yes.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? I do have one question. I noticed that there were several waivers. Are we voting on those separately this evening? Or is it one resolution? And the waivers are... I know there was a question of deferral or waiver on a few of the items.
I could go through them if you'd like. Some of them are deferrals and some are waivers.
What page is it on in our package?
Page 29 is where the waivers are, begin to be discussed. Greg, do you know what page they're, they would be listed in the resolution that we're approving?
They start on, right, they start on page nine. The resolution.
We typically vote on them separately, though. So being encompassed in the resolution is something different. We don't vote on. They had, yes. There was just a question on one of them where it was optional. I wasn't sure how it was written in the actual resolution.
Thank you. So the streetlights one, we originally requested a waiver, and that was moved to a deferral during the Planning Commission meeting, which we did not object to. I'll see if I can find that one in the resolution.
The one that I was looking at was waiver number three, the deferral of the sidewalk that was contingent on the LCCD, deeming the site stabilized. I was just curious what process the township will have to follow up on that process.
We're actually putting money in escrow for all of those improvements?
For the sidewalk improvements being deferred, so.
To give the township leverage in the future.
Okay.
Jim would skip town or something?
That was my question. Thank you. And I just had one other question. The Lehigh County Conservation District letter did note that there was some question on meeting standards. I don't know, it had to do with the disruption of how much soil on the site. And my question was more process than, again, with the township. How do we stay on top of that to assure that the DEP standards, if they do cross that limit, get taken care of from the township's perspective?
Are you referring to exceeding an acre of disturbance?
Yes.
So LCCD conducts inspections during construction, and they have the authority to actually stop construction if they, if it would get to that point. I mean, it doesn't, but they could require the applicant to get an NPDS.
Very good. Thank you.
I don't think I've ever seen that happen, but.
Commissioner Kelly, too, if you don't mind. As we inspect, there isn't a ENS plan included in the site package. So as we are out there inspecting, we also check to make sure that they are within their limited disturbance as defined on their plans. And if they do deviate, that's when we would also be able to get the district in and say the 0.9 acre went to 1.1 acre. So.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions from the board, I'll turn it over to the public for any questions. Is there anything in the chat? Okay, do I hear a motion to grant preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Long's Water Technology?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and good luck with your project. Moving along in our agenda, we are going to skip down to motions. Item number eight, C, which is a motion to proceed with the adoption of the entire civil service eligibility list for patrol officer in the South Whitehall Township Police Department. And I would ask Chief Dorni if you would help with this motion.
Thank you, commissioners. This is just the process in which we need to adopt the civil service list, which was in fact certified by the Civil Service Commission last week on the 12th in order for us to follow civil service guidelines to hire police officers moving forward. Some of the background was that we are a member of the Lehigh County Testing Consortium, which involves 12 departments in Lehigh County, where we give one test, one written test, one written, or the physical exam all in the same day. And then we do our own individual interview process, which took place on January 5th and 6th for South Whitehall Township. And those folks are listed by candidate number on the list, which we ended up with 15 viable candidates moving forward on the list. So I'm asking for the Board of Commissioners to adopt that list so we can move forward with the hiring process.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Anything in the chat? Okay, do I hear a motion to proceed with adoption of the entire civil service eligibility list for patrol officer in the South Whitehall Township Police Department?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And I will move back up then to Resolution 7E, which is a resolution extending conditional offer of employment to the entry-level position of patrol officer in the Township's Police Department to candidate number 43797, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty. Chief Dorni, if you would please assist with this?
Yes, this is, again, just a procedural aspect of it in which we certify three names through civil service for each position that's vacant. We currently have one vacant position, and we're asking to grant a conditional offer of hire to candidate number 43797. And that does, in fact, meet the civil service guidelines and criteria to at least start the background investigation and move forward to make sure that they are fit for the South Whitehall Township Police Department. It does not grant that we're going to absolutely hire them. It just gives us the ability to start the process.
Very good. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Nothing in the chat? Very good. Do I hear a motion to extend the conditional offer of employment to the entry-level position of patrol officer in the Township's Police Department to candidate number 43797?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief Dorni. Moving on to item eight on the agenda is motions. This is a motion of the board to appoint new commissioners to our established subcommittees. At this time, I'm going to open the discussion for the board to accept volunteers first for the Budget, Finance, and Audit Committee. Is there a commissioner who would like to serve on that board?
Commissioner Kelly, I would.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Is there another commissioner who'd like to serve on that board?
I would like to continue my service.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolk. Are there any other interests in that particular committee? Very good. Thank you. Any other comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Nothing in the chat? Very good. Do I hear a motion to appoint Commissioner David Kennedy and Commissioner Michael Wolk to the Budget, Finance, and Audit Subcommittee?
Make the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto motion B is a motion to appoint two commissioners to the Fire Services Subcommittee. I will open the floor for discussion of the board for volunteers to serve on this subcommittee.
Commissioner Kelly, after 25 years on public safety, I'd like to be on fire service.
Very good. Thank you very much. I would like to serve on this subcommittee if it's agreeable to the board. And is there any other commissioner who has an interest in this particular subcommittee? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this? Nothing in the chat? I make a motion then to appoint Commissioner Kennedy and Commissioner Kelly to the Fire Services Subcommittee.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly, if I could just add just one quick comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. The willingness for Commissioners Kennedy, yourself, and Commissioners Wolk on these two subcommittees, first of all, I appreciate. And I don't want anyone in the audience to misinterpret, you know, let's say, the lack of additional possible volunteers. We all have confidence that this will be done very well. We have confidence in the people who we just appointed. Just want to make that little comment.
That's a very. That's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Osborne, for the public as well. There will be some new committees being formed in the near future that will afford opportunity for other commissioners as well to serve on. So please stay tuned for that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Moving ahead, we're going to move on to item D, which is a resolution approving a sewer planning module at 4815 Crackersport Road. I believe Herb Bender is going to speak to that this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Triple Net Investments LLC is proposing a 13,500 square foot building addition to be located on the north end of the existing 9,882 square foot building located on the currently developed site at 4815 Crackersport Road. Developer is requesting approval for 1,115 gallons per day or five EDUs of sewer allocation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board regarding this resolution? None? Are there any questions from the public? Anything in the chat? Hey, do I hear a motion to approve the sewer planning module at 4815 Crackersport Road?
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. May I have a vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for presenting this evening. Onto item E, it's a motion to proceed with vehicle purchases for the Public Works Police Department and Fire Departments. I believe Randy is going to assist with this.
Sure, I'm going to give a brief introduction if that's okay. The reason these are all appearing here early in the year is we've obviously noticed a significant increase in the prices for our equipment and our vehicles, which is a nationwide concern, obviously. When we did budget for these vehicles and equipment, we did put a about a 5% contingency into these line items to make sure we would be covered. That contingency is quickly running out. A lot of these vehicles, if delayed further, will continue to rise in price due to the price of steel and low inventory. Inflation is certainly a real thing and we're dealing with it every day. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Herb first. He's going to go through the each individual Public Works pieces of equipment that we're proposing here this evening. Chief Thorny is going to touch on two of the, I'm sorry, three vehicles, but two different line items here for the Police Department and Chris Kiskeravich is also here to support the Fire Departments and their request for a purchase.
Very good. Thank you, Randy. And Herb, if you'd help us with the Public Works vehicles.
Do you just have a certain order? You just want to go or no? We'll start with a freight line.
I'm sorry, I guess there is an order.
All right. Public Works is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the purchase of a 2023 Freightliner Dump Truck. This truck will be used for multiple functions for hauling blacktop to salting to plowing snow. This truck will be replacing a 2003 International Dump Truck. The price for this piece of equipment is $192,526. This was budgeted for The international truck we currently own will be put on municipal bid once we receive the new truck. And again, this truck is over budget by $133.70. And again, that is due to surpluses that are being added to the price of steel.
Are there any questions from the board on this particular item?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Just a quick one in detail. So please, not much time. So the old vehicle that this will replace, it has some value, monetary value, if that's correct? So when we realize that monetary value, first of all, are we going to sell it?
Yes, it will go on municipal bid. So it'll actually be placed on auction for two weeks.
Okay. Yeah, I think I saw that in the agenda. So where do the funds upon sale of this particular vehicle go?
Usually, I would have to ask Scott.
The, the money that will be realized from the value of the old truck, what line item in the budget does that money go to? Okay. Other fixed assets? Okay, great. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Anything from the public or in the chat? Okay, Herb, if you proceed to the next.
All right. Public Works is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the purchase of a 2022 Ford F-550 Dump Truck. This truck will be used by the Parks and Street Department. Some of the functions for this truck is to haul material such as mulch, stone, topsoil. This vehicle will also be equipped with a snow plow and salt spreader, which will help us in the cul-de-sacs. It's much smaller than a single axle dump truck. This truck will be replacing a 2006 Ford F-250 that has some mechanical issues and will not pass inspection. The price for this piece of equipment is $87,377. This was budgeted for $82,200. The Ford F-250 we currently own will be put on municipal bid once we receive the new truck. And again, this truck is over budget by $5,177, which is due to when we went back to make sure everything was good before we came in front of yous. The upfitter has raised the price of the outfit of the truck, which is the body, which is going to be stainless steel.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this particular item? Any from the public or in the chat? Thank you, Herb. If you'd go on to the next.
Public Works Sewer Division is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the purchase of a Super Products Camel Dump 1200 Series Jet and Back Truck. This truck will be used to flush and back the sewer lines and manholes throughout the sanitary sewer system. The price for this piece of equipment is $443,664.82. This was budgeted for $488,664.82. The backer we currently own will be moving over to the Stormwater Division. So we will not be auctioning the old backer off. It's just going to simply go to a different section to help with the MS4 so we can start TVing the, excuse me, the stormwater pipes.
Very good. Thank you for that explanation, Herb. Are there any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Okay, thank you, Herb. And I believe you have one more?
One more, yes. Public Works is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the purchase of a 2022 Ford F-250 Utility Truck. This truck will be used by the Water Department and set up for our weekly water testing and water flushing that we do once a year. This truck will be replaced by a 2005 Ford F-250 that has very bad rusting issues and will not pass inspection. The price for this piece of equipment is $47,362. This was budgeted for $47,257. The Ford F-250 we currently own will be put on municipal bid once we receive the new truck. And again, this truck is over budget by $104.
Thank you, Herb.
Which to get it that low, we did take some things off of this truck. So we did our best to try to get down to where we needed to.
I appreciate you working within the budget and trying to get the product that you need to do the job as well as being mindful of the taxpayers' funds. Appreciate that. Any questions from the board?
I would want to add, as I always do. This is a snapshot of what Herb does. Herb manages the life cycle of all of these extremely expensive assets and he puts a lot of thinking into the exact time when it need to be replaced in order to optimize the cost for the township. So thank you.
Thank you.
So no other comments from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you very much, Herb. And if we move on, if I would ask Chief Thorny to please present on the two vehicles for the Police Department.
All right. The first vehicle in question would be a Ford F-150, which would be replacing a supervisor's vehicle that we currently have in service that's well over 100,000 miles and has become mechanically, it will probably not make it through the year. So it would just be to replace one of the supervisor's vehicles. The other two vehicles are just patrol vehicles that will replace other vehicles in the fleet that are going to be taken out of service. So we have two SRO vehicles currently that have high mileage. One of them is actually a 2006 and the garage is fearing that it is rusting out and they cannot get replacement parts for it. So although they do not get used much, what we would do is take two of our older vehicles that are in the patrol fleet, bump those down to SRO vehicles and put the new vehicles into the patrol fleet to replace those. So and the equipment that goes inside those would be attached to this for a total cost of $217,112.20.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the board? I just had one question, Chief. Do the vehicles that we're retiring because they're having mechanical issues, do they go on the municipal as well? Then we auction them?
Yeah, correct.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the public this evening? Any in the chat? Thank you very much, Chief Thorny. And then we have one vehicle related to the Fire Department. Fire Commissioner Kiskeravich, you'd help us with this?
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. We are looking to proceed forward with the replacement of the Fire Marshal's vehicle. He is currently in a 2009 Ford Ranger that is due for inspection in April and is not going to pass inspection due to a big rust issue with it. The new truck, they'll give him also, it's going to be a larger vehicle. We're looking to get a Ford F-150 with an eight foot bed and a cap with the extended bed coming out of it so we can wheel all of his equipment right out of it. It is, comes in at bid on a $43,975.46. We did budget $44,000 for this project and at this point I have heard nothing in changes of price from, from a COVAC on it.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Any from the public? Nothing in the chat? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that covers all of the vehicles under this motion. So we will be making one motion for all of the vehicles. So at this point, I'm going to ask if there's a motion on the floor to proceed with the vehicles that were aforementioned. Or Public Works, I'm sorry, Police Department and the Fire Departments. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for presenting your budget information to the board. I appreciate it. Moving on to item number nine, correspondence and information items. The first item on our list is the current vacancies on boards and commissions. Randy, did you want to speak to that?
Sure, I certainly can. I'll just run through the list of vacancies that we have on our current boards and commissions. The first is a one alternate vacancy for our Civil Service Commission. We also have two vacancies on our Landscape Shade Tree Commission. One vacancy on our Parks and Recreation Board, one vacancy on our Planning Commission and one alternate vacancy on our Zoning Hearing Board. Anybody interested in serving on one of these, these volunteer boards are strongly encouraged to go to our website, fill out the Volunteer Board Member Application Form and that will then be passed on to the interview committee for the selection process.
Thank you, Randy. And just to add to that, just for public information, the township does have multiple advisory boards and committees and they really do assist our local government. We do welcome any resident who would wish to enter, excuse me, invest their time volunteering with the township. And as Randy said, the volunteer application is on our website. So thank you for that. And I do have one vacancy to add to that as well. This is a position based on the First Class Township Code that gets appointed yearly. It is for the Vacancy Board of the Township. And the First Class Township Code directs the Board of Commissioners to appoint a registered elector to this position at the board's first meeting each calendar year or as soon thereafter as practical. So at this time, I will officially state the notice that we are accepting applications for this as well as all of the positions that Randy explained. The board will be beginning our interview process in the very near future. If there's any questions, please feel free to contact the township for further information. Thank you. We also have under this item upcoming meetings. Randy, if you would just run down the four meetings we have.
Thursday, January 20th will be our next Planning Commission meeting at 7:30 PM. That will be held here at the Township Building as well as virtually. Monday, January 24th, Landscape and Shade Tree Commission will meet at 10 AM. Monday, January 24th, the Green Advisory Council will meet at 6 PM. And Wednesday, January 26th, the Zoning Hearing Board will meet at 7 PM. Virtual options are available for all of these meetings as well as in person, anybody wishing to come to the Township Building.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on any of these items? Anything from the public? Nothing in the chat? And Randy, if you would also speak to correspondence, item number nine, which is a welcome.
Yes. As a matter of new practice, we felt pretty strongly we were going to add our new full-time employees as well as our retirees to our agenda packet this evening. The Board of Commissioners as well as Township Staff, myself, Chief Thorny, would like to welcome our newest police officer, David Lawrence.
Thank you very much. Yes, we do welcome the new officer to the township. We look forward to getting to know you. And moving on to our next agenda item, number 10 is direction and discussion. Randy, first of all, I'll start with you. Did you have anything you'd like to add this evening?
Not under direction and discussion. I do know we still need to discuss the flood mitigation grant that has been provided through the DCED. That is one item the Board and staff would like to discuss in a very near workshop meeting. I'll throw that out there. February is open right now, so I'm hoping we can all get together to help finalize and provide some direction to staff for that project.
Thank you. Very good. I'll open it up to the board. Is there any board member who would like to bring any discussion items this evening?
Yes.
Commissioner Osborne, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, President Kelly. I just have two. And the first one is related to courtesy of the floor. The, the change, in my, in my opinion, the change to bringing courtesy of the floor to begin to the meeting is a very positive and good change. So I really welcome that. Thanks for helping the residents, giving them an additional opportunity to, to say what they'd like to say. Just a thought. And I just throw the thought out. We may want to consider keeping the second courtesy of the floor at the end of the meeting in addition to the one in front. And the purpose of that would be just in case a resident or someone online has a thought that occurs during the course of the meeting that isn't necessarily subject related, but they didn't, you know, they missed the opportunity if they didn't have the thought in their head to catch us at the beginning. So just a thought.
I appreciate that input. Thank you very much.
And the second one is this. As everyone knows, we have a RFP out with the response. This is for the Township Manager position. Actually, it's for the search firm or a Township Manager position. And the responses are due by January 28th. So it's again, just a thought. Does our board want to consider, knowing we're going to get the responses by January 28th at the latest, setting up any special meeting between the 20th of January and our meeting on February 2nd so that we can at least begin the interview process so that we can, we can make a decision either on the meeting of the second or certainly we have everything lined up by the meeting of the 16th of February.
I do have one thought on that. And this may seem ambitious, but it's extremely important that we move forward to select this firm who will then start work on selecting the new Township Manager. We're starting that process. So if we were to approve the recruiting firm on February 2nd, then the dates to hold interviews would be either January 31st, that's a Monday, or Tuesday, February 1st. And I believe this is where Randy and Tracy comes in. If we were to agree this tonight and if Tracy were to issue the notice to the morning call tomorrow, then it could be published by either Saturday the 22nd or Monday the 24th, which would allow the seven day advertisement period. or Monday the 24th, which would allow the seven-day advertisement period, which would enable us to hold these meetings either on January 31st or February 1st.
Tracy? Confirmation, I believe.
Well, I was going to ask, is there any further board comment before we?
I have a question for listener later. Would those interviews, I know we talk about transparency. Would those interviews be open to the to the public, the sunshine, or an executive session?
I believe the discussion among the board previously was an intent to conduct them in public. So if that's the intent, certainly there's no issue there. And the comment about the special meeting, I believe, under the Sunshine Act, a special meeting, which is what you're looking to potentially call, that would only have to be in 24 hours in advance. So certainly the seven days is more than ample time.
The other requirement, Randy's monitoring the receipt of the proposals. Obviously, the firms who come forward would have to get the heads up that these dates were set and, you know, they're pretty soon after the 28th.
We can certainly reach out to the the firms that it's it's been emailed out to, to see if they can make those those scheduled meeting dates to see what they would prefer. I can't promise they'll all be able to make the same date. I believe when we did put a schedule into the the RFQ that we had a decision from the Board at the February 16th meeting, just to make sure there was enough time to to interview all of those firms. So we can certainly try to fast-track it, but the that will depend on the the firm's availability to meet a specified date of the board.
Could we set up the early dates? I mean, what if we set up the early dates and we're not ready to proceed? If it's just 24 hours, then we, how does that work? We just cancel the special meeting?
Well, that was going to be my question. Since it's a 24-hour notice that we need to give, and obviously there's 10 days or 12 days between now and the days we're proposing. I believe it might make sense to have Randy even see if they would be available because this would be fruitless if neither firm, you know, any of the firms are available to meet with us. So we need to check on that as well if we've got time to do this in interim. Plus, we have to think of availability of all of us. Can't give that to you.
Sure. Well, you know, in my thought, we can circle back with each other and see if, you know, we're available, and if we're not, then we can't. But it it was just a thought to to actually expedite the process and and maybe more clearly define some deadline.
Yeah, the thinking is, like, if we're scheduled on a workshop, it could be next month or two months from now. But this is, after all, critical step to hire our next Township Manager, which we'd like to do as soon as we possibly can. That's why we have the early dates and would appreciate everybody trying to free up as best as possible.
Well, thank you for bringing that to the board, Commissioner Osborne. Are there any other Commissioner comments under this? I just wanted to, I guess, follow up. Randy, you spoke about the flood mitigation. Is that something the Board wants to move forward? We do have the February 9th second Wednesday of the month workshop availability, if that's something the Board wants to move forward with? Open for discussion.
I think you mentioned that the staff wants to move forward on it also. So if
Sure.
the staff's available and that we have workshop scheduled.
Absolutely. We'll certainly make ourselves available. This is something that, you know, we we do have a grant deadline, so we can file for an extension. But obviously, we don't want to file for an extension if we're not going to move forward with the project. That's the worst thing we can do. So I think we just need some clear direction. If this is something we'd like to proceed with, I'd like to have Tony present as well just to help, you know, explain kind of the engineering background process and what would go into a plan like this. But again, it it is somewhat time-sensitive and something we'd like to to get some direction on.
Is the Board in agreement with scheduling a workshop in February? Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, would that be the ninth, February 9th?
It'd be February 9th at 6 PM, and it's already pre-advertised, so.
So we don't need to take any action. We're good. Okay.
We'll certainly include it on the website with the agenda and the topic or topics that we discussed that evening.
And if possible, I would suggest we did talk about other committees that the Board is discussing forming. If there's time to maybe combine those in that workshop to kind of get them formulated and, you know, potentially on the next agenda after that. I think that would be a good use of our time as well.
I I would agree and and certainly encourage that.
Very good. Any other discussion on that? Very good. We're done with that portion. Moving on to old business, I'll turn that over to you, Randy, if there's any update on where's dam?
No update on where's dam. Last time I reported out on this, I I did advise the Board and the public, we did not receive our DC and our grant. Our permit has been obtained, so we are now in the the final design phase and starting to prepare the bid package.
Do you have any idea when we would look at that work beginning?
Ideally, now or between now and March is a good time to go out to bid. So, you know, the contractors are trying to line up their work for the year. By the time the the bids are advertised, received, approved, this is something we will be looking to move forward with, I would say, by spring. So construction could, it would depend on the contractor when they can fit it into their schedule. But the idea would certainly be to start this construction over the summer months when the water's a little bit lower. So they can get in there, do the work without, you know, jeopardizing the stream and kind of keeping everything, you know, buttoned up down there.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I have a comment, actually a question for you, Randy. I know that grant request was denied. What are the chances of reapplying for it, or are there any other grants that could be considered?
So the the timing of that would be the concern for me. We could certainly reapply, but I'm not sure we would get it. You know, if we went after the same grant, we could try a different state agency, but grants for dam repairs are somewhat far and for, you know, far and few between. Plus, it is budgeted for in the 2022 budget. So I believe the timeline was to proceed with this project this year. And typically, with grants from state agencies, you'll have a certain deadline, let's say, April. You may not hear back from that state agency until late fall, early winter, sometimes not until the following year. So we'll just continue to push the project down. We would, we would have to wait, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public on that topic? Nothing in the chat? Thank you, Randy. Sorry to call on you again, but if you'd address old business, item B, Route 309 Ridgeview Intersection.
No problem. This is something that a a resident brought up at our last public meeting, and I thought it was important to include here under old business. No concrete data to report out on, but I did want to advise the residents that this is something we are actively looking into internally, as well as it's recently been brought up in Planning Commission meetings. So once more information becomes available, we'll make sure to put this back on the agenda under old business and report out to that for the full board and the residents as well.
Thank you for that update. Any comments from the Commissioners?
Question. It's PennDOT involved in your discussions?
At at this point, no, they are not. This just came up a few weeks ago, so I just thought it was important to let everybody know we were.
Let me rephrase. Is it the intention to include PennDOT?
Depending on where the conversation heads, yes, I think they would obviously need to be part of any discussion moving forward.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any from the public? Thank you. Moving on to old business, item C, Comprehensive Plan Update.
So the Comprehensive Plan Update, we had the first workshop meeting on January 11th. It was, we actually ran that as our first test of the hybrid meeting system so people could engage virtually. We ran that as a first test, and it worked pretty well. There are a few things that we have to iron out, but that worked really well. At the January 11th meeting, we reviewed the process. But we talked about what the Planning Commission will be looking at and how they will be filtering all of the information and bringing it down into clear, concise goals and objectives and implementation. So that was the gist of that meeting and the focus of that. The next meeting on February 8th is where we start to dig into the goals and objectives. The first section will be overarching goals and objectives for the entire comprehensive plan. And then we start getting into the individual focus areas. So the next one on the list would be resource protection. The intent is to get as far as we can at the meeting. So if we can get through goals and objectives and into the next subject, we're going to go ahead and start going that way, try and get as far as we can with it. Also, you know, this is, these are public meetings, so we encourage as much participation as we can. So if you could sign on, as of right now, there there will still be the virtual component. So please sign on. That meeting is February 8th. So hopefully, we can get as many people as we can.
Thank you for that update. Are there any questions from the board? Dave, I just had one comment. Thank you for encouraging public participation. Can we push that out on Township social media through the Park and Rec?
We we have the mailing list, and we can send that out to reminders for the mailing list, including the link to the meeting. And we'll work with, Police has a Facebook, and I think Parks and Rec have one. Put it on there.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the public on the comp plan update? Thank you. Moving on to item 12, which is Department Reports, we'll begin with the Executive Department. Randy?
Sure. January's been a very busy but exciting month. We've been working very closely with the Board of Commissioners, getting all of our new board members as well as Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Walk up to speed. We held a very successful ordinance review workshop on the second Wednesday of January, just, I guess that would be last week. Sorry. Where we kind of outlined a lot of the ordinances that may need attention over the course of a year or or next year as well. Provided feedback to the Board, Board provided feedback to the staff, very successful meeting, developed a new process on how we review these ordinances and when they, when they get onto public board meeting agendas. So we we've outlined a process that I think will improve the advertising of these ordinances, both on our website as well as in the public meeting formats. We also obviously successfully completed our reorganizational meeting on January 4th. Thank you for the the Board's participation and support during that meeting. So we are off and running and happy to say that the Board's been very supportive, very great at communicating, and I want to thank each and every one of you for that.
Thank you very much, Randy. We appreciate your leadership through the new board. Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments? Anything from the public? On to item B, Community Development.
So Community Development Department, Special Projects, we talked about the Comprehensive Plan again, February 8th. Please log on for public. We'll start getting into goals and objectives. The other thing that Randy mentioned is ordinance updates. A lot of the ordinances we discussed were community development, so we're looking at those and bringing some of those forward to you shortly. Boards and Commissions, the Planning Commission at the December 16th meeting, they recommended approval for Long's Water, which you saw tonight. Route 309 Wawa was taken under advisement. The Dorneyville Shopping Center Restaurant pad was also taken under advisement. At tomorrow's meeting, the Rouge subdivision was scheduled. That has been pulled. Route 309 Wawa was also on the agenda. That has also been pulled. So we have Ridge Farm Phase 1A will be at the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow. The Zoning Hearing Board met December 20th, and they approved variances for Parkland Manor, which is the old racket center. There were some parking variances that they asked for, and those were approved. We will be seeing part of, we'll be seeing further information with that, with land development. The January 26th meeting has been canceled. There were no applications. Of note, the Zoning Hearing Board Solicitor Maria Mulane has retired. So the Zoning Hearing Board is currently seeking replacements for that position. Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, December 28th, they reviewed the 4750 Tillman Street Store, Cedar Brook Senior Care, Long's Water, and Dorneyville Shopping Center Fast Casual. A lot of the applications for Landscape and Shade Tree come in at the last minute. So I don't really know exactly what's going to be on the 24th. And again, there's two vacant positions for that, so if anybody's interested, please submit an application. The other thing we do in Community Development is permits. December residential permits, we saw a pretty significant drop. So things slowed down in December. And then non-residential permits, there was a slight decrease, but nothing of significance. We also process Public Works permits, a right-of-way permits. Anything that goes in the right-of-way water and sewer utility connections. So we've seen a decrease in that, but we're at 10 and last, or 12 and last year, we were at 17, so still kind of in the ballpark with that. Enforcement program, the winter really dies off. There's no highways and grass to complain about. So we start to focus on ordinance updates in the winter months for the, with the code enforcement. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I appreciate you reporting the outcome of the Planning Commission for us. I think it helps us stay in tune with with what we're going to be seeing in the future.
Yeah, exactly. And the the idea is to kind of give you guys a heads up of what's coming. Again, if you have questions about projects as they come up, you know.
I do have one question regarding code enforcement. There's a particular sign around town, multiples of falling away stuff. I'm not going to identify the person, but they're actually nailed to utility poles.
Okay.
I believe it's a violation of the Pennsylvania State law.
Yep.
I don't know what avenues the township has, but if you, I'm sure you know which ones I'm talking about.
I think I know what you're talking about.
Yellow and greenish.
Yep.
They're really
Yeah, they're
prolific throughout the township.
We will look into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any comment from the board or questions for, anything from the public? Thank you. Appreciate that. Next, under Department Reports is Finance Department.
Good evening, Commissioners. The, we have many things that we're working on in the Finance Department, though there is just one thing I would like to highlight tonight. We recently added someone to the Finance Department that specializes in business privilege tax, and she has identified some vulnerabilities that we have with the program. While we do have many goals for 2022, there will be a strong initiative by our finance team to make sure businesses and owners of investment properties are compliant, both now and in the future. Specific and immediate areas of focus are discovery and a thorough review of returns that were filed. We also plan to advise and update our business privilege tax regulations. In fact, some of that has already been accomplished as we have a redesign of a new application for business privilege. That's complete. We we would just encourage anybody in the public that has not registered their business or that has any questions about business privilege tax liability to contact the Finance Department. We also have in the upcoming newsletter a little blurb that shows some information about the business privilege tax program in the future. So that's really all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just got one quick comment. We waited until we decided members on the Finance Committee tonight. Our normal monthly meeting would be tomorrow, but instead But instead, I've suggested that we have it sometime next week and Scott will, I think, check availability.
I will reach out to both of you tomorrow.
Thank you. But I just had a question on the business privilege. Thank you for letting the board know that that's something the finance department's focusing on. I appreciate the newsletter information. I wondered if there's something we can put maybe even on the homepage of the website. I don't think, you know, education's always important and I would like to get in front of this to bring it to the public's attention, if that's something that we can do as an option.
Yep. Thank you for that suggestion.
Any other comments, anything from the public regarding finance? Nothing in the chat? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, park and recreation. Mike?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few quick updates for you. Obviously, it's winter time, so all of our indoor programming is underway. All of our indoor programming happening in partnership with the school district. We've started to reach out to some playground suppliers regarding the Southway Del Chace Playground renovation project to take place in '22, which was budgeted out of the open space funds. Also in the department here have been working to update the website, rec desk, everything, getting everything lined up for spring, summer. And on that note, we will start the hiring process for our summer program as early as February 1st. So you can expect to see news come out on that. If you know any folks in the area that are looking for part-time seasonal employment this summer, please send them my way. Always looking to get more folks on board for this program. They work with hundreds and hundreds of kids in our community and it's a great learning experience for our employees there. Also had an initial kickoff meeting with Barry Isit to look at the park rec, open space and trail plan. Could be getting a timeline from them, possibly even the end of this week, maybe next week. And I will make sure that everybody has the important dates, public meetings and everything else to do with the prep plan readily available so that we can all have input into that plan. That's a very important plan, as you all know. Also putting together some 22 sponsorship ideas for the department, just including some general program sponsorship and memorial tree and bench program, which has been discussed the last few years here. Looking to get some of these things launched and off the ground. And last but not least, working on finalizing the newsletter. We got everything from all the departments just this past Friday, putting that together this week and piling it all. Could be sending it off to the newsletter company this Friday.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mike, I just had one. You're speaking about hiring for the playground. Do we partner with the school district to let the students know that we've got opportunity within the township for employment in the summer?
Yep. We've attended their job fairs in the past. I know they've had outlets just via email as well, and I've also reached out to just some sports coaches, different athletic folks that may be able to.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the public? Nothing in chat? Thank you. I appreciate the report. And moving on to E, public works.
Herb again. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. In the streets department, we are keeping up with the snowstorms. As everyone knows, they haven't been big, but they are a nuisance, so we got to clean them up. Again, we'll be in early tomorrow morning, getting ready for another nuisance storm that's coming. We took on building our own inlet risers in-house this year instead of purchasing them. So we are currently building our risers so we can rebuild the inlets that have broken down over the years. We are repairing the water leak cuts after the water department repairs. The main break, the street department moves in and repairs the street after that. On the park side, we're trimming trees right now. We're over in the Kilmer area as we speak. We're taking down the Christmas lights, the low level ones. We are waiting for our bucket truck, which is going to be coming probably next week. It's supposed to come this week. Their office has COVID. I told them to stay away from us. Once that comes, we will get the higher lights down. We're installing the wire mesh behind the split rail fence that we did install last year around some of the detention basins. That has finally come in. It's not on back. On the water department, we are fixing the water leak repairs. When I wrote this, we had nine after, right now, we're on our 11th one this year already. We are currently also putting out leak detection to try to get some of these leaks found, so we're not always on overtime. The water always seems to surface at night instead of during the day while we're here. And we do our station yearly maintenance list, which we change the oil out in the pumps, we grease the pumps, change the chlorinator pumps around and make sure they're all up and running smoothly. On the sewer side, when the temperatures allow us, we're OTVing MS-52. That will also be where the lining could possibly take place this year in the cast in place. We're also, when temperatures allow, we flush out the routine problem areas in the sanitary sewer system. And in our garage, we're keeping up with the repairs of the snow equipment. If we lose hydraulics or plow breaks. The routine service of the fleet, ours, police, everyone's, and we also brought in-house this year, the maintenance on the water station generators. We have always used an outside company to do that. We still have that company we can use, but instead of them coming in to do the yearly service on them, our mechanics are doing that now. We have them in case we don't have the tools or it's something we cannot fix. And that's all we got.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, actually, it's not a question, Herb. I just wanted to congratulate you. You and Drew Rice and Dave Viszinski and Mike Elias, congratulations on getting your water license. I don't know if you all understand what that is. It's numerous hours, lots of studying, lots of field experience, hands-on experience, followed by a pretty rigorous exam. So congratulations to all of you, Herb, and thank you to all public works for what you're doing.
Relay the same words to them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions from the public on public works? Nothing in the chat. Moving right along, we're up to the police department, Chief Dorney?
I'll go over the stats for the month of December and then year-end stats as well. For the month of December, we handled 1,101 reports for the month compared to 998 last year in 2020, for an increase of 103. Year-to-date, we handled 1,360, 690 reports compared to 1,1064 in 2020 for an increase of 24%. UCRs, which is our crimes, for the month of December, we had 76 compared to 57 last year for an increase of 19. And year-to-date, we had 879 compared to 2020, we had 858 for an increase of 2%. Arrests, we had 26 for the month, which was the exact same thing as 2020, or a 0% change. Year-to-date, we had 371 compared to 403 last year for an 8% decrease. Just due to the fact that with stats, you could look at them different ways, we wanted to compare 2021 compared to 2019, just due to the fact pre-pandemic of, of last year is not really easy to compare data to because of the pandemic. So for the, the year-to-date, 2021 compared to 2019, we handled, again, 13,690 compared to 12,517. UCRs, we had 879 versus in 2020, 1,232 for a decrease in crime of 29%. Our arrests were down at 371 compared to 528 for a decrease of 30%. If you can see the decrease of arrests and crimes are about the same. So that gives a comparison to pre-pandemic to what we're doing currently with that, when it comes down to the stats. Second thing, just wanted to again reiterate the welcome to David Lawrence, that he will be a great addition to the police department. Young man, very excited to be here with us. He graduated the academy December 10th and started with us two weeks later and is in field training currently. Third item I want to bring up is just a reminder, I believe Sergeant Groger has it out on social media, that we are starting our second citizens' police academy, which will start March 3rd. We're taking applications for that. So if anybody is interested or knows anybody interested, please reach out to us, contact us, and we will make the arrangements to get you in. I think it's a great program. I know several people that have gone through it, that have, have spoke very highly of it, very educational. And it's a great opportunity for us as police officers to meet many members of our community on a one-to-one basis. Next thing I want to talk about real quick and just to kind of reiterate what Brian mentioned before about the speed boards. It was a great opportunity to bring up, we do have five on order currently, five, or two additional, I should say, that's my item five on my list. Two, two on order, and that was from a donation from Kressman Insurance. They donated, they, you know, obviously they deal in a, in a world of safety when it comes to insurance. And they thought it was prudent to give back to the community and donated money to purchase two additional solar panel speed boards that we'll have out there in the very near future. So that should help our community and hope try to keep speeds down in our neighborhood safe. Last thing I have is just, I'm sure many people have seen it on social media. City Valentine Police Department had a tragedy in which Officer James Stanko passed away unexpectedly just two days ago. And I just want everybody to kind of keep his family and their thoughts and prayers. I worked with James for many years at the City Valentine, great person, great guy, great cop. So just want everybody to kind of keep him in their thoughts and prayers. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Chief Dorney. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Very good. Thank you. And item G on the agenda is update from the township engineer. Tony?
Yes, thank you. Um, we published our list of progress that we have up to date. We are currently working on the status of subdivisions. We introduced that to the commissioners, so that, that will be coming out next week or so. The list you see, obviously there were two, Kreiser and Long's get moved down to the second page now, so we're always updating. Additionally, we are working with Herb, we have our construction standards in whom we've been talking about a few things to update, but we should wrap those up. Again, just generic updates, either based upon PennDOT or based upon things that we see in the field, just to keep township up to date.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you very much. Moving along. We are on to item 13, which is a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments. I need a motion to authorize those payments. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of authorizing payment of invoices and dispersments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is executive session. The board will be reconvening into an executive session right after this meeting this evening. And we are on to agenda item number 15, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No vote.
Second.
Second, thank you. A motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, officer at the